The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you do real call attendance to those who are here, Marty?
Mary Jo Rasmussenowski.
Here.
Mary Jo Rasmussenowski. Patty Jacobson's here. Laurel Meek. Amy Huffman here. Naomi Butterfield. Scott Martin.
Okay, has the meeting been noticed to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're open for public comment, anybody who would like to address the board with something that's not on the agenda. Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to community engagement. And we have a board commendation for Lisa Rochester today.
Thank you, come on, please. So first of all, so everyone knows, this is Lisa Rochester. And so the board is wanting to recognize Lisa this evening because there's just been a lot of conversation in our community about student lunch balances and account lunch balances. As everyone knows, we made some significant changes to our practice this fall that led to lots of systems in place, all of that stuff. And Lisa and I had a lot of conversations, making sure that our kids are still getting fed, offered some food on daily basis, but not getting the full reimbursable meal. And Lisa was motivated by these conversations to do something about it. So started with herself, then expanded to her church group. And then we are now the day after a pretty significant fundraiser that we'd love to hear a little bit about in a moment. But while there's been a lot of other people involved in this work, Lisa has really been spearheading it. And is just really dedicated to making sure that our kids all get that hot meal each day. And what I appreciate about the conversations that we've had is it's never about blame for the adults, never any shame on the district for holding these people accountable in this way, but instead, how can we be helpful and how can we get the kids what they need? So we really, really appreciate your extra emphasis on that. So thank you so very, very much, we appreciate it.
Congratulations. And we'd like to hear about your fundraiser a little bit, if you have some.
Yeah, we were, it was busy most of the day. We got about 100 haircuts done in about five hours, so they, six stylists were there.
And did the stylists donate their time to be there?
Yeah, stylists all donated their time and their tips, so all the money went directly to the, for the donation. Yeah, we just had a ton of community support, over 40 individuals and businesses donated raffle items. And we had people donate bake sale items and Laurel and I made t-shirts.
Those we asked, if those were still for sale?
They're still for sale through the end of the month.
Can I have Laura's, please? Reflections on water?
Yeah, reflections on water. And then the cost of the t-shirts, $15, and 10 of that 15 goes to the donation. And so last, I think this morning, the total was 4,700.
Wow.
Gosh, give that a round of applause. That is so fantastic, so fantastic.
Good coverage on these.
Yeah.
Well, I can get a picture of the two of them.
Yeah. I didn't get it.
We could send you the link, we've got it.
Yeah.
Awesome. Just out of curiosity, could you share what motivated you to jump on this cause? Because there's any number of ways that you could volunteer for kids, what made you interested in this cause?
I don't know, I guess just the thought of, I mean, I can imagine what it's like to not, to be a child and to be hungry and to be there watching, you know, your friends and peers and everybody getting to have a nice lunch and there you sit. And they don't, they don't understand necessarily why. And it's not their fault. You know, you can put blame wherever, but in the end, it's not the kids' fault. And a lot of times, it's not necessarily the parents' fault either. I mean, it can really happen to anyone at any time that you could fall behind, so, yeah.
Awesome. And just out of take aboard, we've talked about, and Lisa's kind of been the spokesperson for this group, even though others have been involved, we've talked about it's not necessarily canceling past negative balances, though right now, those funds are in a pool that Joey downstairs manages. When all students go through the lunch line, they're, they get scanned and the kitchen notifies anybody who's on that list, or Joey checks it, anybody who's on that list that is negative balance. She then goes and makes a manual recoding of that, so the negative account is actually, the food for that day is actually coming out of these angel funds as opposed to from the family. And then she follows up with a phone call to that family saying that your child's lunch was bought today by the community angel fund. So it's not necessarily canceling the debt, but it 100% is feeding the kids a hot, full, reversible meal on that day, and is preventing families from growing their debt. And so, yeah, just wanted to hear about that.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so very much.
Makes a big difference.
$4,000 for one day's.
Yeah, wow. It's awesome. The next item is Focus on Purpose, the K-5 Social Studies Report.
That's brought to you by Stephanie Bridgen.
Yes, I apologize if we don't have any teachers here. I know how much you like to hear directly from them, but, oh, sorry. But we had a lot of other commitments and did definitely get in on a presentation, but just kind of got to come through this. So, the little little group, if you have questions, we can certainly stop along the way, or we can ask and answer at the end. So, those are the folks that are part of our K-5 Social Studies Department. And so, as you know, all of our K-5 teachers teach all subject areas, but the purpose of the book, our teaching, the world being a standard, critical writing, these are kind of the goal to people for social studies. So, tonight, I'll just share very briefly with you kind of some of the past work of the department, what they have worked on last year and this year, some of the highlights with the work of the new social standards, and then just a few brief highlights from some of the grade levels of social studies and our next steps. So, the social studies content area has been void of standards for a long time. So the last time that standards were revised in the state of Wisconsin, the last year that we had the standards was 1998. And so, because for a long time, we were looking at standards that were 15, almost 20 years old, as a department, about five years ago, the department really was kind of in a holding pattern, waiting to see the state going to revise and revisit the standards, or we just take the course with those, but really wanting to be able to align to more current practices and direction in the area of social studies. And so they'll turn at the National C3 framework, which is more of an instructional framework for teaching social studies, a high emphasis on inquiry. The three C's stand for college, career, and civic life. And so that is the national framework. And so that was good work to do and was kind of under the direction of the department, a public instruction, because when they did and go to revise standards, they use that framework as well. And so that was, that was not time that was wasted by our teachers. And so they really dug deeply into those to give themselves kind of some newfound direction in the area of social studies. And they worked really hard to revise curriculum and adjust maps, so that we're really specific about not just what are all the things that we should be covering in social studies, but what is really viable in the time that we have, to be sure that what we had on paper was what was happening in the classrooms as well. And so that's kind of been the path to work. We also worked hard to carve out more time for social studies. Within this time, before this time, we had kind of diminished the time that social studies was given direct support. There was definitely social studies integrated during literacy time, but we really wanted to provide specific social studies instruction and content, and so really stealing that time back from ELA and giving it the time that it deserves. And so that definitely has been work that has gone on. We used to sure have work to do in that area, but we have made some good strides there. And then last year, as part of the vertical education that you heard about throughout last year with the other content areas, the whole social studies department did align K-12 with some of their past curriculum work. And so that was beneficial to see things that were strengths for the department as well as areas that perhaps have some whole successful, good work to build off of. So, in light of that, this is the current time that is dedicated to social studies. It is a little bit more integrated at the K-1 level, but you can see there that it's a couple of times a week. Second grade is a little different in that it's one time a week for alum or student time. Third, fourth, and fifth is much more dedicated time, and so, which we are glad to have been able to carve that back out, but want to keep problem solving around K-2 because we want to have some dedicated social studies time there too. But this is very similar to what you saw in science, there's kind of that switch off of units between science and social studies at some of the levels, but there's kind of the overall approach there, but knowing that, as you see in some later science, it's something we're committed to continue to work on. So then to just share the work of the department this year, so the state did revise the new social study standards, and so they came out at the end of that this past school year, with the school year before and that third year. And so we are, especially with K-5, curious to be able to look at those and be careful as we get to know them better and start to articulate curriculum about them. We know that the plates of the K-5 teachers are very full with all the other subject areas as well. And so we want to go slow to go fast when it comes to adopting these standards and aligning to these standards. We want to get to know them well so that we can do our work thoughtfully, as opposed to just, let's really run through all the standards and say we're aligned and give it our blessing and move on. We really want to work hard to get to know the standards well, some of the shifts and things that we'll talk about, and be thoughtful in our work. And so, we have pulled a team together of teachers that have dug into the social study standards so they can be representative, doing some deep learning on their own. We had someone from CISA last week on the 14th to go through the standards for a full day and work related to those, and just pick them up again in seventh grade. And so, then local support is available there, accessible trade when it comes to content areas, so that's been some, some good work to get started. And so from that work, we will be, you can kind of see some of the things that we did there, creating a vision for social studies that we can kind of come back to at the elementary level to base decisions on. We've started to work on developing scope and sequence based on some guarantees that we'll get together in just a minute. So thinking about the new social study standards, the students success committee, I know we looked at them in more depth a couple of different times, but just for the full board's information, it does have six strands. And so the old social study standards had five strands, so the one that they added was the inquiry process. So not necessarily new content, but thinking about how do students engage in the social studies work in their classrooms, emphasizing the need to do a little inquiry process as opposed to the teacher is telling the office about these different areas of discussion, reliability, critical thinking, and writing, and discussion into how we learn social studies so that when we're dealing with social studies topics, as students move through their life of us in K-12 and their rest of their life, that they have those skills ingrained right along with the content. And so the other areas, the general sciences, economics, geography, history, and political science, those, the way the standards are written, they are written in gray bands that you can see across the bottom there. And so we have spent some time at the elementary looking at, so where should some of these things be mastered, looking to see what the highlights are of the most standard areas. So again, here are some of the shifts that come along with the standards. I already talked about that inquiry piece. The other one is really, the writers of the standards and the, which was a group of teachers that work with folks at the state level, wanting to really have integration across the different strands. So we're not just talking about history, but when we're talking about history, we talk about economics during that time period as well, and how the geography probably played a part into that, which makes sense that we would integrate those pieces because they don't just seem to evolve. And so, to be honest, that's a piece that we had already worked on that approach within our system, and so that's a nice, makes sense to our teachers and something that, especially at the elementary level, the folks that have, we've met around this, they feel like that's something that was already in place before, so building on that will be a strike. The other piece that the state writers of the standards really wanted to instill was that balance between skills and content, that it's not just content, existing facts and figures and those kinds of things, but teaching skills alongside, like we talked about, kind of similar to those cross-cutting concepts in science, science standards that we built up the last three months, so that those are kind of integrated. And then, there's a K-12 progression, we talked about those bands already, and then also just the importance of that civic engagement and having authentic audiences for the work of social studies, so that if there's, we're learning about something in social studies content, that we are also thinking about how does that affect our lives today, our local communities, some of those kinds of things, those are heavier emphasized in this realm of the standards than before. So this is the vision that was created by the elementary group. I'll let you read that. It's very fun to work with the teachers who try to wordsmith this vision. And so there's a lot of key phrases to them that they really felt strongly about. Students recognizing they have an impact was very, very important to them. Active citizenship, using those skills of inquiry, critical thinking, and having effective communication as the end result, so good work. And so of all the standards, they worked hard to prioritize across K-5, so by the time the student has left elementary school, they should have some mastery over this, the things around the slide and the next slide. And while everything is important, we really are trying to think about what are the most high-leverage things that the middle school and high school need to build on as they continue to develop the rest of the skills and capacity areas of social studies. Any questions on this guarantee, Lisa?
It seems to me, that's, when I look at K-2 and what they are expected to do, that's pretty sophisticated. Is that a standard that all the students are supposed to be able to meet by the time they're down to second grade, is that how they do it?
That is how the standards are written, that won't be how they're assessed. So the assessment is still being developed at the state level. They won't be assessed in social studies until fourth grade. And so we have a little bit of decision-making that we can make as to what degree. And when you look at those K-2 standards, the 3-5 ones definitely build on that, and so some level of mastery for sure by the end of second grade for kids, but complete mastery at elementary schools is kind of our overall goal.
Patty, I agree, you read some of those and you think, put a group of adults in a room and let them understand why you, explain why two people can talk about your head from different viewpoints, right? A group of adults may struggle with that some days.
Developmentally, it's hard for them to think ahead, to think about those things, so I just, it's interesting that that's what they are.
And so then we started to draft, and this was just the beginning of it, so it wasn't completely fleshed out yet, but a school consensus for K-5, and we'll continue to build on that throughout the first degree levels. But wanted to just let you see the beginning stages of that.
Somebody had trouble with the PowerPoint, are you able to make it go to?
I didn't see, I clicked on that, I couldn't make that Michael.
I couldn't read any of my, my stuff on here because the background behind the wording was out there, so it just like led into the back.
Weird.
Well, Jill said she came up here to get ready and her computer wouldn't open any of our Adobe project or files, so I'm, yeah, I wonder what's going on?
I can certainly.
Computers are out to get us all.
That was helpful, thanks. We got the far side.
While you come around with that, I'll just share some of the activities and things that happen right now at the elementary level, just a couple of highlights. Something that they utilize at the K-2 levels, they use this plastic news quite a bit. That's a subscription that we pay for annually, and it's nice because it has some digital components, and it has videos, it usually has a current event piece to it, but then also it's pretty well aligned with the content that we already teach in some of those levels, and it's very engaging for the students. So that's wonderful. In third grade, they wanted to share a little bit about the inventor project that they do, so in third grade, they researched an inventor and kind of the impact that their invention had on the world after they invented it, kind of helps change things at the third grade level, of course, but the kids get really excited about that project. And it's a nice period of social studies content, and they do some writing about it as well, but that's one that the kids really, really, really love. And then, of course, in fourth grade, being Wisconsin history, and they have the Wisconsin history projects. But they also do a fair amount of inter reading of Wisconsin history with economics and geography and civics and civic duty and those kinds of things as well, so. Thanks, Jill, thanks for this whole piece of this.
I don't think I have to say anything.
No, just wanted to kind of give you an overview of the units that we're in the process of developing, or revising some from past years that we've had, to more closely align with the second grades. So it's definitely work in progress, work as we're, some of our other presentations have been more finality, this is all work that we've done in the past, it's definitely a little messier because we're right in the thick of the work, but you said you wanted a snapshot, so that's what we're giving you. All right, so we'll talk about next steps. I'll just keep rolling if that works for all of you. So as I said, we did have someone come in from CISA to help support our K-5 team, they're going to be coming back February 20th. We're going to spend the whole day really diving deep into writing those units of study. The unfortunate, fortunate part with social studies content and the standards that were written, they were written very much for the state of Wisconsin, and so it's much harder to find a resource that is written by a national publishing company that's going to match exactly how these are written. And so there are some nice resources out there that are more specific to the different threads, like economics or, you know, for younger kids and those kinds of things, history, et cetera. And so we are working, will work together to kind of write our own units and then pair resources to those. And the state's given some direction for that, which is helpful, especially K-3, but that will be work that we'll start and keep working on. Some of the other things that came up as we've been doing some of this revision work, possibly investigating, reminding junior achievement, that was something that we used to do at the elementary, now we'll be doing it at the middle school. And so part of that is the commitment on part of the folks coming in, and so that's a big end time, absolutely. And so we were able to address some of those areas in the general sciences and economics that folks come in, and so we'd like to at least investigate what possibilities might exist with that moving forward, continuing to problem solve, how we can find and dedicate the time to social studies across all of the grade levels. And then just kind of the other things that we already talked about, and making sure that we're integrating those strands with each other as well as across other content areas, and being sure that we have resources that are engaging and motivating for students. And some of the resources will come at the end of all of this curriculum work, but that is something that we're kind of on the lookout for as we do the curriculum writing to find resources that are engaging. So what we have now is, knowing that the standards were from 1998, our resources are somewhere around in that early 2000s range, so they're not going to have no 20 years old as well, so. Not that history has changed that much, but there's always more, absolutely, absolutely. So, and then this was just kind of, it's wonderful that people that are coming that are part of this department love social studies, and so it's very exciting to work with that because they're very passionate about integrating this into the work. Any questions?
Well, just my same concern that I had in science is, you know, when I look at the second grade time once for 60 minutes a week, I'm glad to hear that you are working to address that, because there are those students that don't shine in reading or math, but yet when they have the social studies science time, that's when they shine, every once a week is a deal. But you know.
We do, and so.
Which, to be honest, that was one of our challenges with junior achievement as well. It wasn't even just the bringing the people in, it was when are we going to, what are we going to not teach that day because junior achievement is there? And so just that tightness of that elementary time is so difficult.
I remember you used to have just like, well, sections here and there, and you just had to work with those.
Yeah.
So as you know, we're looking at a possible resource option for ELA, and so that could, depending upon what we land on, could give us some, could change the timing. We currently do it all to ELA, so that perhaps we have more flexibility of time, but annoying conversations for sure. Do we have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. We have some employment recommendations to approve.
First of all, I wanted to highlight one of them, he actually is not here tonight, which is unfortunate, so we gave him a little extra attention this morning at admin meeting, but after 28 years, Mr. Dever has decided he's going to retire at the end of this year. And so he made it crystal clear to us this morning that it is not necessarily a retirement into retirement life, but a change of career paths at this point. So he's going to be looking for some work perhaps at Fort McCoy and a whole new direction, so we're super excited for him. The other ones, Mr. Eisenzey was a new math teacher at the high school this year, he resigned effective last week, and you can see a couple of their pieces in there, so. But wanted to highlight and congratulate Mr. Dever. I told him you could celebrate him another time, he had a death in the family that he was not able to be here for today.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the employment recommendations.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. We have new course proposal for math. We don't, we don't give Stephanie a break here.
All right, so the proposal that was in your packet was for a new math class at the high school, a transcripted class with Chippewa Valley Technical College, CBTC, which we have typically not partnered with them, but they are just a part, just right outside of our region, but they offered a class that we were looking to be able to offer, and Western did that, and so we can start with them, but. So our goal in offering this class was to provide a rigorous option for the third year of math. As you might remember, three years of math were required by the state for graduation, and so we had previously taught some other things in that spot, but really had wanted to provide something that was rigorous and preparing students for their next step, and so math for the technical trades is a class that we are hoping to offer for next school year. It is a year-long class. If they were to get a D or better in the class, they would receive three technical college credits from CBTC. And so they have been wonderful to work with. I included the core syllabus, and you can see the units outlined here within the budget section of the proposal. I did just kind of put in there the dollars for possible textbooks. When you transcript a class with any of the neighboring institutions, I mean, you do have to make sure that you stay with the same edition of book that they have, and so we have to do that to start out. Other than that, as far as the transcription process, in April, the teacher from our department that would be teaching this class face to face to our students would have to go down for a day of orientation, this is what it means to be a CBTC teacher, some of those ins and outs, and then they would also spend a day in May, just working with the teachers that teach this class on campus, to make sure that, and to really work on the curriculum writing and assessments and all of that, so that they would leave that day having the course pretty well put together. And so they get that support on an annual basis, but they would go back to CBTC every summer and kind of recalibrate around the course outcomes and assessments and tools and all of those kinds of things as well. Any questions on that proposal?
Okay.
Math, remember, we had a lot of conversations recently about what their right sequence of courses is to offer, and we're excited about this possibility because it's a very life-applicable course for a lot of our students that are headed in this direction, and many of our transcripted classes are in some of the elective areas, and so it's really nice to get a core area transcripted class option as well.
Is this a course that's offered through Western as well?
It is not. So we reached, I reached out to Western and just said what we would like to find them applying, kind of applied math, something that students were interested in going into or read, that would could help in the program. And the way, Western is actually in the process of revising their math courses, right now they have like math for construction, or math for, you know, very specific areas, and so they're in the process of revising those to have something in their general like this. And so they said, oh, you're just a couple of years ahead of where we are, and so they're in like a two-year revision process, and so.
So someone getting the credits through our high school could most likely be accepted at Western for their math program, okay?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's in the technical college system.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, okay, good.
If they went to Fox Valley.
Okay, just, okay, perfect.
Great question. And so even to go one step further, when I reached out to CBTC, I had said, I talked to Tyler Luth King at Western, and they didn't have this option, but then she also circled back around to him just to say, okay, we'd like to partner with Black River Falls, and they try to be good neighbors.
Perfect, okay, yes, yes, thank you.
Supportive and on board, which is.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the math for technical trades? Thank you. Any more questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
And then I have one more that was not actually in your packet. The math conversations have continued to cycle, and so one other one that they wanted to bring forward is up on the screen for you, and I have power copies sitting on my desk, which is not helpful, but I'll bring them up and give them to you before you leave in case you want to get deeper dive into this information. But they wanted to also propose a statistics class. So in our investigation of the extent of what we used to offer, we offered a consumer math class, which was very, for the third year option if you didn't want to take Algebra II, but is very similar to our personal finance class. It was more math-related, but some students ended up taking both, and then they felt like it was repetitive, and so we thought we can really broaden our horizons and help support students for their next steps in. next steps in math. And so talking to industry as well as, we did a survey of schools around the state and what they do for that third math option, third year math option, and a big focus on statistics. So we think about all the different kinds of industries that really look at data, track data, have to be able to analyze data, talk about probability of different things, no matter what the industry area is. Those are all really, really important skills in the workplace. And we're cross cutting for career areas. And so the math teachers have been doing some research into different other schools that offer a statistics course. And we also reached out to the Department of Public Instruction, to their math consultant. And that is a direction that a lot of schools are going as well. And so we were able to get a little bit of support from all of those, but with lots of moving parts, we were not able to solidify everything until Friday afternoon after the packet had already gone out to you all. So I am sorry for that. But you can kind of see in the description, some of the hi pieces, really that data analysis, looking at different kinds of probability and different kinds of calculations and conclusions that they, when it comes to statistics and data. And so we have some, a couple of teachers that are really excited about it. I'm almost excited about statistics, but they are excited about it after they told their horror stories from statistics in college for math. I mean, yours must have been crazy, but. And so that really is kind of focus area. I did attach to the end of this, a couple, well, I attached one full scope and sequence from another district. And there, I also linked a couple other ones. So I will, I can split them up to you so that you can click on those links and be able to explore those. This would just be a semester class, and the goal would be to give students kind of an overview of statistics and help build those skills so that if they took quantitative reasoning at a technical college or statistics at a four-year college, they would be able to prepare.
So a separate approval?
Marty, has this stuff been added to Moodle?
No. Okay. I didn't think I even got it electronic. Okay. So yes, we would need a separate motion to approve the class separately. I just wondered if people wanted to look at the materials or if you felt comfortable.
If you'd like to.
Does it take the place of something else? I guess that's what my question was.
Sure. So it would take the place of consumer math. And so that was a year-long class. And so it would be math for technical trades could be an option for students for statistics, but it would also be an extra elective or not extra, but elective in the math class in the math department. And so if you took Algebra Two for your third year of math, you could also take this as an additional math option without having to commit to a full year of math.
You know, Mr. Young did just a very small number of kids, he would do independent study statistics class in the past when kids were interested in that area, but.
Yeah, let a couple of kids take it, take statistics on Monday as well.
Does anyone oppose to voting on it tonight?
As long as it's okay that it's not on the agenda.
Is it okay?
We have new course proposal. I, I think you can, yeah, I think we can make that happen.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I did.
Okay. This, okay. And second, okay. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we need to look at our soccer team co-op.
There are no changes recommended from the last time that it was updated. Remember WIAA wants them resigned every two years. So that is both the soccer and the swimming. I separated them, but there's no need. I wanted to remind the board that we voted earlier this year that we were going to take over the funding for soccer. There's approximately 24 student athletes that are participating in that. Swimming is very heavily dependent on the co-op. And we, in conversation with Mr. Weinman, we just said the low participation is not something that we are interested in paying for right now because we have, I thought it was like four athletes right now that are participating from Black River Falls. And then I think there's like five from Blair Taylor. So I separated them, but again, it's the same function. Just wanted you to remember that we are not paying for soccer and we are not, I'm not recommending that for swimming.
Just to refresh your, can girls play on that boys soccer team?
Yes, but boys cannot swim on the girls swim team. Right. Which is a whole nother equity. It's such an equity issue. It's frustrating, yeah. But girls do play on the boys soccer team. We don't have enough girls to run a separate one. There was a time, I don't know if Melrose, Mendoza still does, but there was a time that Melrose had a girls soccer team. I don't know if they still do, but we do get a few Black River Falls girls who play on our boys soccer team. But unfortunately, youth swimming has some male swimmers, but they cannot swim on the girls high school swim team.
Okay. Any, any more questions? So is motion to approve soccer and the swim team co-ops?
I make the motion?
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, motion carried. Open enrollment size determination again.
Also wanted to remind everyone that this is an annual thing that we do. It is a function that every district is supposed to articulate what open enrollment spaces they have available should anyone request open enrollment in. What we're sharing with you, this is what our best guess estimation is right now. If we do not add any staff to any of those sections, the 20, so up on top is the current, and you can see the number of students, the number of sections, and then the student to teacher ratio is the grade down below. What we are anticipating based off of this year's numbers is that 2021 section right there. So what we are recommending to the board is that we would have room for open enrollment in all of our grade levels. However, we would not have any room for open enrollment in special education across the district. However, I also want to remind you that the rules for special education, we cannot simply say you have an IEP, we don't have any room for special education students. We have to request the IEP for that student. And Tammy and that building principal need to go through that individual IEP and see if it is feasible for that student to mesh in with resources that we already have in place, or if we would need to add additional staff for that to happen. When it first became law, districts had the latitude to say, nope, we are tapped out in our special ed department. And that has, more clarification has come out that you need to look on a per student basis as to what that IEP actually requests before you can decide whether you have room or not. So we are saying we are full at the end for special education unless an IEP comes in that would change that. And we are saying that we have room across the rest of the board for other grade levels.
Is that work in Charlotte? Is the IEP coming to the office or and then is it goes to town?
So hopefully, when a parent comes to register the student, they mark that the student has an IEP. When they fill out the open enrollment paperwork, there's a box right on there that says the student has an IEP. When they say that, so all of those forms go to an online website. Joey has to go and retrieve from there all the time. She gives them to me and I'm the first scan. And if it says yes, there's an IEP, we pump the brakes and I call and say, we need to look at this IEP. But that parent is waiting for an answer. We have to wait for their previous school to send us the IEP before that can happen. Unfortunately, what happens sometimes is there's no notice of the IEP. So the no box is checked and then the student comes and is already enrolling. And the, sometimes it happens that the student starts to struggle and they can feel sometimes say, well, I used to go to that one room with this, just me and that other lady. And we'd be like, really? Tell us more about that. We would find out they had an IEP someplace else. And I would, I honestly believe that sometimes parents don't understand what that means. And so they just check no. So sometimes we do find out after the fact. Those are a lot tougher after a kid's been here for a month to say bye. And so we, we haven't typically done that. But the only time that we've typically said yes to open enroll special education students was when there's a family of like three, four kids and one of them has an IEP that doesn't require one-on-one aid and that we can mesh those resources. And there's other siblings that are coming to town or, you know, sometimes a student has lived here and then they moved just outside our boundaries. And we've been servicing that student for five years already and, you know, to kick them off. But we, we work hard to serve all, yet we recognize that our special ed resources are definitely limited.
Any other questions about that?
When it comes to the other grade levels, let's just say that 30 kids come in that are all fifth graders next year and we have to add another teacher, we still would probably end up financially ahead. So we say that there is room at every other spot.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the open enrollment determination as presented? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Motion carried. We received your behavior support.
Good. I got some nice feedback from families when I sent that out. I got 10 to 15 people that were just really enthusiastic about the, the changes in structure and they were excited to be a part of it. So that's exciting. This was developed collaboratively, Stephanie put it together, but with input from an awful lot of other people and hoping that this district model can speak in a general language, but then each of the buildings is tasked in the next couple of weeks to put this together specifically for theirs. Would you scroll down to the bottom just a little bit, Jill? Thank you.
Run to tier two or?
One. Thank you. So like when we get to classroom management systems and we're talking Red Creek, they would probably just directly say responsive classroom or, you know, some of the programs that are very specific that the staff and students and families would recognize that language as opposed to being like, oh, I wonder when they say, you know, school community building, their Tiger Pride activities would certainly fit under there, but not all the buildings call it that. So the hope is that this is a universal language that we can all speak and then each individual building can talk about what it looks like there. In tier two is when we had to hire some of those additional staffing. And so just a brief update on that. The ISS rooms, they're calling them Alec, Alternative Learning Center, Alec. And we have both of the staff members hired for those. The high school, we have Pat LaBarbra who's excited to come in. And so he was our dear officer, Lee Beckwood. And so it'll be exciting for him. And then Laurie Kitelinger is running us at the middle school in that role. And then the elementary, we have our, we were really struggling for catchy main for that room. And finally today, I think we landed on it. Oh, am I stealing your thunder again? Is that going to be a report?
Well, it's clear. Now I.
I'm like, again, she's growing at me.
I was wondering if you were going to remember. Now I can't. She's just excited.
Reset room, thank you. So it's self-regulation to go just reset. And so we've identified the adults that are going to be working in those buildings. Blair Taylor has some training coming up on zones of regulation that we're able to get some staff in right there as opposed to sending them far, far away. So we are excited about that. There's been some great work on the systems, what it's going to look like for, there's a checklist when a teacher needs to remove a student, here's all the steps they need to follow when they get to either the Alec room or to the reset room. Here's the system that that person is going to implement. So there's been a lot of conversations up front this Friday during the professional development day that will all be rolled out to the staff. So hopefully everybody knows exactly what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and what to do when people aren't willing to follow that. So we're pretty excited about that.
There's been an interesting program on TV about those in Colorado where they bought the kids all have a heart monitor watch that goes from blue to green to red.
Really?
And then they can, they self-regulate themselves with breathing techniques and different things.
Wow.
Kind of pricey, but it was very interesting.
Clever, clever. Let's see what it watches us.
Maybe just get some magic.
It's a color. It's a color that works for the kids and they can watch.
Absolutely. Because if we talk about zones of regulation, we talk about if you're in the green, the blue, the yellow or the red, that absolutely is part of it.
That would really mess them up when they go to Fayette and they are expected.
Then they'll be red.
Everybody's angry in Fayette, look out.
Well, a lot has happened in one month, you know, from when we moved forward and this officially.
I just, one more update. The behavioral deferred expulsion program, today we had our very first meeting with a high school student, grandparents and child. And grandparents are reiterated over and over how appreciative they are, that there is a second chance, well, not a second chance, they said to their grandson, a 500th chance, they said. They just said that they hope he recognizes the gift that this opportunity is and hope that he digs in. And so they were really, really excited about the possibility. And so that, we have one more meeting that we're trying to schedule tomorrow morning at eight, it sounds like. And so two students will be ready to start next week, Monday already. So that's great news.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, that was good news to see in one month's time. I, I know some work had been done prior to it too, but I mean, this is really impressive.
I thought if this all works out really well, you could be presenting this next year.
Oh, is that what you thought? I'm always looking for more things to present on. That's perfect. I'm going to take the team with me. Excellent. So it is exciting and I'm very interested to hear how staff feel it is going by the end of the year. And we don't have like a pre-survey because we didn't ask those same questions, but we most definitely had all those conversations. And so it will be interesting to see how long it takes before they start to sense a difference. And I'm excited for this Friday because right now they've heard about it in theory. And so Friday they will learn about it in theory and in actual practices, this is what it looks like. And we've talked a ton administratively to make sure they understand, and when you give a kid a directive, you can't let it go. I use this example, Mr. Solheim had a great example of one of the restorative conversations that's supposed to happen. And the student was supposed to reflect on why they got removed from class. They made a not appropriate statement on their reflection. They, they said the teacher's voice makes his ears bleed. And so the, which, that is a very real life example for a high school student. And so the counselor tried to have that restorative conversation and it wasn't going to work. And so then Mr. Solheim tried with that same student and he's like, come on, we gotta talk to the teacher. I don't need his name, but you're bleeding the teacher. You have to go talk to him. And the kid's like, I ain't talking. And he started to walk away. And Mr. Solheim said, either you can come have this restorative conversation or you're going home OSS today. The kid came back, had the conversation. It was a quality conversation. The kid heard the teacher and the, his ears didn't bleed. And the teacher, and we went both ways and the kid went back to class successfully. And so just having that system in place for if not this, then you're going to leave. You've lost the right to be there. And so I say that to you again to remind you that it may look worse before it really gets better because there are kids who are going to test that every single time. When we say, if you don't, you're going to be asked to leave, there are going to be kids that we have to send home a couple of times so that they really recognize that the system doesn't allow for them to, you know, make it their own way. So wanted to remind you of that.
This sounds to me like it is the teacher's some power to do something.
Hopefully, that's our hope. And so, but, and to be honest, through those conversations, several of the administrators heard from teachers that they will tell a student to be removed from class to go and the kid will refuse to go. And the teacher feels like admin is too busy or the office is a zoo and they're not going to send the kids and they go on with teaching. And so the other part of it is them guys needing to make sure the teachers hear the message, we are only as strong as our weakest link. The moment you tolerate that negative behavior, it undermines all of this work for everyone. And so you have to stick to your guns. You have to. Don't make, I mean, that's parenting 101. Don't threaten to take away their birthday if you're really just going to slap them on the wrist, you know? So there, that it, it sounds like a very simple thing, but when you've got, you know, 50 professionals working in a building to get them all to agree to that exact same level of behavior, this Friday we're calling it behavior expectations calibration because we really need to try to get everyone on the same page. And some people are just more tolerant of misbehavior, outspoken or the volume or tone or, you know, some people are just more tolerant. And so really trying hard to make sure every teacher not recognizes that the system is there to support them, but recognizes their responsibility to hold kids accountable to it, not, you know, they're harming their neighbors if they tolerate the behavior. And that is a tough thing to get everyone to recognize. So it will take time.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your work. I know it's been a team effort on administration too. Thank you. Okay, student success report.
All right. Well, a lot of it is stuff that we've gone over tonight, like the social studies updates, the pyramid that we just saw, a couple of things that were additional was the kind of a survey that went out to see what education exists up there for parenting skills. And basically, it was not a lot. I thought maybe school and hospital could, clinic could collaborate because they know when new parents are coming in, you know, expecting children, that that maybe would be a good place to start something up. Anyway, and then the other thing was kind of the ELA resource review. That's, that's the process that they're going through right now with that. And we got more information on kind of the timeline of keeping on top of the behavioral stuff. So.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. You've received the monthly expenditures in your packet. Is there anything you want brought out or have any questions?
I did have. Yeah. Well, I was gonna ask you before, Jill, when you were so computer crazy. I just saw a check for Fall Cinema one and two. I thought, that's interesting.
I'd have to look at that.
I know, we'll talk later, but that's, I thought, that's an interesting one. It was on the expenditures for twelve thirty-one nineteen, page eight. I just thought that's kind of not expended.
I'll look at it before we leave.
It's two hundred, it's small, two hundred twenty-nine dollars, but I thought that was interesting.
Small is relative.
Yeah.
Well, it is small.
I can't recall what.
Well, I know that's.
Whatever.
Okay.
No, for sure.
Okay. Any others? Okay. It's a motion to approve the expenditures.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay. Well, in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay. Approved?
We received the message that, for Tammy, had to have surgery and then her healing didn't go well and so she had to go back in for emergency surgery. And so, we're unsure when she's going to be returning to us. So, Jill made sure she knew what she needed to do to get payroll out.
Yes. Yeah, that would've been an issue.
But we're hoping, it seems like she's on the path to healing this time.
Okay, good.
Hopefully Monday.
Okay. And Jill, you've prepared a presentation on equalized property values, okay? For our listening pleasure.
She brought a big spreadsheet to me and I go, that would be great to share with the board in like a, some other format than a spreadsheet. It's exactly like.
I know that's what you love.
I'm like.
I know that's what you love.
Interesting, but. Well, first I'm gonna give the disclaimer, I'm not an expert on apportionments or assessments or property tax bills. I look some of this stuff up myself. I understand in general realities, so I'll try to do my best to explain a little bit about what's on the tax bill and how we get to, what's the school district's apportionment piece, okay?
Okay.
We just thought, because everyone just got their tax bills, you guys sometimes get questions, so thought if we could help you better understand, it would be good fuel.
Okay, yes, yes. We'll get some questions, I'm sure.
So, obviously, if you've looked at your tax bill, there, the school levy is just one of the four levies that are typically on your tax bill. You have the county, you have the school district, you have the technical college, and then you have your municipality, city, township, whatever it might be. Also, there's a lot of other numbers on there, but the ones I'm gonna focus on are talking about the assessed value that's on there, the equalized value, which we also call the fair market value that's on there. There's also an assessment ratio that affects your tax bill heavily, and then a school levy credit's on there as well. What you don't find on there is our tax rate, our mill rate, that's not on there, but it is part of the calculation, which I'll show you. So, assessed valuation, that is when an assessor comes in from the municipality and decides to reevaluate basically the homes in that municipality. That's usually then put on the tax rolls by January first on the values. Equalized value is what we deal with in the school district, that's what levies are applied to. The Department of Revenue applies an adjustment factor to the assessed value. So, they take that assessed value and they say, hmm, I'm not sure this municipality's been keeping up or not with other values in the area. So, they try to equalize them across the municipality and municipalities. So, they're trying to get to an apples-to-apples comparison, basically, with homes in the area. And I went, you can go right to the DPI website, they have those definitions on there and some more information as well. Oh, and I went to DPI, I'm using this old computer and it's not mine, so it's different. So, why equalized value, just what I said, they wanna have that apples-to-apples comparison. They wanna have one standard system because one assessor might look at one municipality different because the same assessor doesn't do all nineteen of our municipalities. So, they truly look at where values have been in that municipality and apply this assessment ratio to them. Another thing that's on your tax bill is called the school levy credit. It's a little bit deceiving because it doesn't actually come to the school district. It's on the tax bill and it's a credit to the taxpayer. But it's based on school levies over the past three years and then those dollar amounts, it's a formula, and then those dollar amounts are given to the municipalities. And then the municipality apportions that to each individual taxpayer in their municipality. So, just note what I just said, that the current funding system counts the school levy tax credit as state support for schools when actually none of those dollars go directly to schools. It's a credit, not a tax bill for the taxpayer.
Which is ironic that our actual school mill rate is not on there, but this is and it's not our money. So, it just feels great.
So, this was what a tax bill looks like. I'm gonna muddy it up a little bit with some circles and squares. So, on the very top, this is a real tax bill in the city of Black River Falls. You can see across the top, there's a total assessed value in the orange square and then there's an average assessment ratio. So, throughout the city of Black River Falls, there was an assessment ratio of point nine two six nine. What that's saying is that a hundred and five thousand nine hundred dollars is at ninety-two percent. The state believes that that's at ninety-two percent of the real fair market equalized value. And that circle with the letter A underneath that is the total estimated fair market or equalized value. Those are the same thing, a hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. So, again, taking that total assessed value times that average assessment ratio to come up with a total estimated fair market value. And that's what they're gonna use to apportion your taxes and apply mill rates and tax rates to. Now, mine and Town of Adams, we're at an average assessment ratio of point eight eight. So, you can imagine that my assessed value is one number, but my estimated fair market value is a whole lot bigger number because the lower the number of a ratio you have, your equalized value's gonna be a greater amount. So, I put the formula across there in those boxes. So, you're taking the equalized value or the fair market value, multiplying it by our mill rate, which again, is not on here anywhere, that's our mill rate, point zero zero eight nine seven, or eight dollars and ninety-eight cents per thousand dollars. And then we're subtracting the school levy credit, which is in that other box in the letter C. So, in this case, subtracting a hundred and seventy-eight dollars and that, that is determined by whatever dollars the municipality gets and they apportion out to their taxpayers. And then you come up with the school individual taxpayer levy. So, the two thousand nineteen column, the third item, well, fourth item down, right next to letter D, for this taxpayer, it was eight hundred and fifty dollars. So, again, that's the formula, the fair market value times the school levy rate, in our case, eight point, point zero zero eight nine seven, minus the school levy credit, comes up with the individual school levy. Does that make sense?
It's a lot clearer now. Yes, thank you. Thank you.
So, just thinking about, so comparing this same tax bill to last year, so remember the assessed value was a hundred and five thousand nine hundred. It was the same last year. It hadn't changed. It probably hasn't changed for a few years. The assessment ratio last year was point nine six, or almost point nine seven. So, when you multiply those two numbers together, you come up with an equalized value of about a hundred and nine thousand five hundred. For this tax bill that we just saw, it was the point nine two assessment ratio. And again, that's applied by the Department of Revenue, that's nothing that we do or the county does or the city does. You come up with the equalized value of a hundred and fourteen thousand. So, there, without doing anything, just applying that assessment ratio, the equalized value for this taxpayer went up four point three percent, or forty-seven hundred dollars. Meanwhile, our mill rate has been the same practically, right? The point zero zero eight nine seven. Then you can see when you multiply the equalized value by the mill rate for each year, you come up with the gross school taxes. They went up about forty-two dollars, or four point three percent. Gee, that's the same as the equalized value change, right? And then you apply the school levy credit, in this case, it went down. So, even worst case for this taxpayer, the change is forty-nine dollars, or six point two percent change from last year to this year. That's a real madness where equalized value comes in, is what the change is from year to year. And that, that moving assessment ratio for taxpayers because that's increasing their equalized value and that's what their tax apportionment is.
And I know that sometimes people will say to you, why did my taxes go up? I thought you said our mill rate didn't change. The mill rate didn't change and you can see that their taxes still went up due to factors outside of the school's calculations.
Is it accurate to say that school levy credit is considered property tax relief for the state?
Correct. But they always call it like support for schools.
And it's so different. Or you pay taxes too, you know? City was six point six, Irving was like point five. So, it depends where you live, I support how much tax go up for schools.
So, I'd also share this.
The mill rate changing.
Without.
The part that you have control over didn't change. I mean, that's the part that's kind of maddening.
You're not gonna be able to see this, but I included it in that presentation, which is in, in your packet. And this is just comparing the equalized values for our whole school district. Our total property value in two thousand eighteen was nine hundred million. In nineteen, it actually dropped to eight hundred and ninety-three million. So, guess what? People's bills went down last year, probably, right? For the most part, because the equalized value went down in the district by a little bit and some townships more than others, I believe. So, the, the second column in the values is what percentage they are of the district, what percent that value is of the whole. The last, the percent change, so for example, Town of Rockaway was a big one, they went down by nine percent last year in value and then this year went up five percent. So, that swing over those two years is not a lot in dollars, but each individual year, that's a big swing from year to year. Does that make sense? So, I just included that to show the differences in the equalized values for all of the municipalities. So, just kind of summarizing then here in the end, so the State Department of Revenue has a website and they actually show what kind of changes happen in different municipalities. I didn't go into looking, I could've spent hours doing that, but it breaks it down by if there was new sales, home sales, or if there was new construction, or the commercial or the manufacturing, there's a couple other areas as well that are separated out in that area. And then they just, and then if there's no new construction in the municipality and the state decides that the municipality is falling behind in the fair market value, again, that's that assessment ratio, then tax bills will likely increase because of the change in that assessment rate by the state. But if there was new construction or something new happened and new value came on the rolls, then likely that's gonna spread out a little bit more evenly. So, so even though the mill rate set by the district doesn't change from year to year, taxes could go up or down for an individual based on changes in the equalized value made by the Department of Revenue or the tax assessor. So, it gets even more complicated if the tax assessor's assessing that municipality too, so.
Seems to me rural areas would struggle with this more because there's less likely to be construction.
I was just gonna share, in talking to the Alma Center, Hubbard Maryland School District, theirs has just been an absolute roller coaster because of the sand mines that came in and then closed. And so, their taxes have just been really like unpredictable because of that assessed value changing so much.
A small piece of our district is the Town of Curran. And last year, the Town of Curran's value went up by twenty percent and that's the sand mine.
Yeah, sand mines, yeah.
So, they're a small part of our district, but if they're a large part of another district, it certainly makes a huge impact in that district.
And it's just spread out more.
And then it will affect things like your aid. You will start looking richer in that formula and.
Didn't you say it was because we lost that TID for TID district?
So, for the, for the city's increase for this year of, where are they, about six point six percent, the value in the city increased, whereas last year it went down by four and a half percent. About four and a half million of the two hundred and thirty-one million is the TID district. So, a TID came off, it's been a TID district for twenty years, allowing growth and industry and things like that, so they weren't paying taxes. So, that value wasn't on our tax rolls and allowed the city to do improvements and things. And so, the payments from that TID were going back to the city. But then there's a, a chance that the TID's going to make money, and which it did, after they paid all their bills. So, we received about two hundred thousand dollars when that TID went off. So, that was the school district's share of that, those dollars. But for the value total, it's a small percentage of the whole two hundred and thirty-one million. It was only four and a half million that had increased, almost twenty years ago. That was a piece of it. It's probably more than you wanted to know, but I thought it was interesting.
It was interesting.
And people are like, why do my bills go up? And I look at my own, I'm like, yeah, why do my bills go up?
Yeah, thank you.
That's getting the spreadsheet.
Thank you. Yeah. Any questions for Jill?
I have a question.
That's good. Okay. Meeting minutes, you receive those in your packets, any of those that you want pulled out for discussion or change? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you.
Seven.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Dr. Severson's report.
I just wanted to be aware, this is the first time that we found ourselves in this situation. We are revoking an open enrollment status of one of our high school students due to trinity. And so, letters just went out today that tell that student and the receiving school district that he is their student again because after multiple interventions on our part and filing trinity with the county, we have the right to revoke open enrollment each quarter or the end of the semester if that student does not respond. So, this is the first time that we've done that process, so just wanted you to know. Wanted you to know that during the holiday break, the vape detectors were set and ready to go at the high school, except they are just trying to figure out the mounting so that they are not visible because we are very concerned that they will get knocked down. But they are up and ready to roll. Project Christmas did something different this year for the pizzas and so wanted to share that there was six hundred and ninety dollars that were donated from the pizza nights at Papa Murphy's. And then next, I wanted you to know that the Toma School District is applying for a junior ROTC program to be in their district and they are very much looking for neighboring districts that are interested in signing on because they believe that in the grand scheme of communities that offer ROTC, they are quite small and so feel like they would have a better chance at funding if they could get other districts that were interested in participating. And so, I have reached out to their superintendent to ask for additional information to see what that might possibly look like. As part of the application, they ask if the district is willing to perhaps offer FIAE credit for kids' involvement or some other classes other than elective credits and that adds points onto your application if the district is willing to recognize the work and stuff that goes into it. And so, I'm not at the point to make a recommendation, but I am interested to know if anyone feels strongly for or against because the timeline's gonna come pretty aggressively once we get the rest of the districts together that are interested. So, you would have any strong thoughts one way or the other?
Enough of both. I'm.
Okay. I'm gonna have to send that out to you electronically because I believe they're gonna need to send in their request before the February board meeting. So, we'll do it. That is all that I have.
Okay. I admit.
I think they're cheating back there. No, I'm just kidding. You didn't mention a word about this, so.
You're welcome.
So, kindness month is, has been our Tiger Pride focus at Red Creek this month. And so, the first day back, January second, we kicked off an amazing assembly that was created, scripted, and ran completely by Bryn, Carmen Hurd, and Katie Bajat. Carmen and Katie, their new counselors, Beth Creason, have been enviable for Red Creek this year. They have been doing amazing work and all three of them being new to our school. So, we've benefited in so many ways and this was just another example. So, the purpose was to revisit some of those PBIS expectations of our kids, especially in the common areas. We go through the lunchroom, the hallways, the stairs, the bathrooms, and what it looks like. So, we went through the matrices and then they also, prior to break, had created videos with kids showing what it looks like. After each area, we showed, they showed a video and then they played a game. And so, they were grade-level representatives and all, it was minute-to-minute style, so that was super fun for the kids. And then the winner's job was to quickly run up to different letters that were backwards and flipped over and eventually it revealed the focus of kindness. And so, that was really fun, way to do that. So the assembly also kicked off another piece that we've done year to year. This year it was a little bit different. Each classroom was given a blank calendar and asked to fill in with acts of kindness that they were going to complete as a class throughout the month. And everyone started out with the same task on January 2nd by saying, yeah, sure. So that was super awesome. That's something, they have 500 kids doing it for you. And so another piece this month are Tiger Pride groups, which are those mixed up groups. Each Tiger Pride group has second graders through fifth graders and they get together once a month and do projects, activities together. So, and there's probably 30, 35 of them because we try to use every adult in the building. And so that project is going to be creating kindness rocks at the extreme level. And so what I mean is they, we asked, not writing, asked, who ran landscaping to donate some nice sized rocks? And so actually, we were going to see about buying them, but they donated all of them from each of the groups. And so Jen Dahl over break painted them, so they're a plain color. But then at the end of the month, when those groups get together, they're going to design their own rocks. And then the plan is to place them along the walking trail that you approved and were heard about. You know, it's, you need to keep planning on that, but that's our plan for those rocks. And then the last piece is, Jen Dahl also had a hand in this. I don't know if you've seen it, if you're a Facebook person, but there's a lot of different kindness, be the I in kind. And so what happens is they have a big K, N, D, and then the child or adult is supposed to stand where the I is. And so we have a huge poster in our cafeteria. And so many of you did a very good job with your superhero foils who are inviting you to come back and be the I in kind and we'll take your picture again, okay? So that's kindness at Red Creek this month. Also, I should say, we also have different kindness notes that are, keep coming through to be read on the announcements and stuff. And so those are just adorable. Sometimes it's the adults pointing out random acts of kindness of the kids, but it's also those kids pointing out. And it's just fun when they find, like the cooks or the secretaries had a shout out one day. So lots of positivity at Red Creek right now.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share something that our first grade team is doing, it's pretty exciting. They are having a Wisconsin day to actually play off of the social studies standards. They are having various stations that all of the kids are going to circulate through that's all Wisconsin themed. They're going to have sports from Wisconsin at a station, some outdoor activities from Wisconsin, some different food. Like they're making crab仁 relish together and they're going to be eating cheese curds. And then they're going to listen to some Wisconsin music. And so they are doing this.
Pocas, yeah.
They are doing this on Wednesday, so that should be fun to see them.
We want to know if the music is pocas.
It probably is. It doesn't standard out exactly what it is, but I did hear we're talking about.
Excellent. And is this Wednesday? Pocas and Chris Cruzy will probably be in there too. Thank you.
All right, so end of semester is coming for our students at the high school. That will be on Thursdays. So they're prepping and getting ready for finals. And the next three days are finals exams for the students. We do three finals each day out of four that they could have. And then we save two more for Thursday, so we give them one study block per day to kind of get things organized for themselves. End of semester, that means students are doing projects. So we've had some community outreach. Our A-classes do SAE projects and they communicate. The students share their community service projects and things like that. Couple other classes have had presentations and they've invited in community members to be a part of that experience and see what the students are working on. Sports and athletics are peaking this time of the year. And then come early February, they start to gear up for tournament action and things like that. The other thing I'd like to share is our PD and for staff at the end of the week. It's a good semester turnaround for us, so it's well timed with our refocus on student behaviors. So one of the themes on Friday will be taking student behavior and engagement and empowerment. And this is really having that emphasis for the day. Each building will be doing their own calibration with staff. What that means, for example, with our building is we're talking about what teachers need to do in certain situations and really get calibrated on, you know, don't plan on keeping your students from being disruptive. We have to address that in a systematic manner so that students know what's coming. And so we're going to work on those procedures. And we've done a lot of backwork on that to make sure everybody understands this is how you do it. This is what you call and standard procedure. The last part of that is we've allowed us to have this suspension supervisors added. We added a counselor for the secondary schools to work with students. Now we're really working on empowering the students to really reflect on what they've been doing. And so we've done a lot at K-12 on working with student reflection and being a part of that process. And really, what are you going to do to fix this? Because it's not okay. And we're not going to just do consequences, we're going to engage you on fixing it. So that's what Friday's all about.
It's like a good day.
All right, since our last board meeting, we have been very busy over the past time to get the building ready for the upcoming programs. And with our offsite EDP program, Brandon and Laura and I have been, we have four family meetings in the last week and a half with four of the students that are coming over from Red Creek. All four meetings worked extremely well. All four families were extremely on board. And so we are looking at that first group of students is coming over January 30th. We will have the first wave of students, then the next group coming over the following Monday. But that has gone extremely well. Starting tomorrow, we picked our SEL curriculum and Yerker is using their curriculum that's going to be K-12. So all of our students in that building will be on board with the SEL curriculum the next, every student in that building. So we start training tomorrow. We've got webinars that will start Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week. So we'll be doing that. The rooms are almost ready. We have wash carpets, hot things moved, everything's in place. And so we're just really kind of getting the last piece of technology and curriculum and everything's ready. But we're holding those parent meetings and making sure that we've got everything ready to start those programs. And so the first behavioral DEP was tonight. We've got another one tomorrow for those students starting next Monday. So everything's rolling right now, so we are set to go.
Good, thank you. Okay, guess that.
Yep.
Okay.
That was true.
Yeah, yes, okay, good. Thank you. And next we'll do, discuss the WASB resolutions. And Patty had done some great research and had some opinions on, on some of them. Should we just go one at a time, you think? Is that, and just, okay.
It doesn't, or oh, hi, this is the first one.
Okay. Do you want to just summarize? Has everyone read, read them? Yeah, and Patty, I want to commend you. I mean, all of the things you brought up were part of the committee's discussion as well. So your, your opinions on that, I mean, are worthy of debate at the, on the floor too. So I also want to encourage you to go to the microphone for the delegate assembly if you so desire. Okay? Okay. All right. So the transportation aid for high poverty districts, and you had an opinion on that.
I guess, one, and I have outlined that, so I just read it and say that when you're considering extracurricular activities, it makes it appear as though that is a right for students. And I think it seems to me students find a way to do what they are invested in doing. And I was, I did have that question. I know we used to run late buses, I don't know if we still do it.
You do not.
And were they underutilized or utilized, well utilized? I guess that was a question.
They were underutilized, but also incredibly expensive. And so we also used to provide busing for summer school. And we stopped that a few years ago because again, it was underutilized. Instead of door to door during the summer, we would have like a couple pickup spots in all of our rural communities. And they were just really underutilized, and so we stopped.
And I think with the access that students have to friends with cars and people with cars and all of that, I'm not sure that we need, that increased funding is going to increase the participation of students in extracurriculars.
I would just throw out there that it says, transport them to or from school or for extracurricular activities because the idea of increasing state categorical aid because of high poverty students, it doesn't say that it has to be for a late bus, but for other transportation needs for high poverty districts. So that would give us the possibility to run a late bus, but it's not just for extracurriculars.
So the choice would be up to the district as you.
Yes. When it says or, that very much.
So we would be picking up again within the two mile district, perhaps?
That would be an option if we wanted to consider that. I'm not saying we would, I'm just saying that those would all be choices. Right now, our transportation runs on a pretty tight budget. And so it would be some recognition that sometimes gas in those vehicles is a hard sell. And I recognize what you're saying, that kids get where they want to. But when you look at it just as an extracurricular, that doesn't take into account the elementary kids who don't have friends with cars and who are home because they missed the bus and they don't have gas in their vehicle. And, and so there are some other possibilities. One of the things that we've thrown around is the option for like a, a late pickup in the morning in like a school car. That if somebody misses the bus, that we could send someone to go get them when the truancy becomes an issue. So we've talked about some of that stuff, but we have a really large geographic district that any kind of that transportation gets really expensive very quickly.
Well, if you do that, you're going to have to send two kids, you can't just send one.
Not true.
Well, is it, well, okay, with all kinds of organizations, there's that you're never, as an adult alone.
There's one bus driver with 60, oh, because they're alone.
There's kind of all kinds of kids in there with them.
We would send a bus driver, we'd be okay.
Okay, and I, I think overall, WASB always supports local control. And so I think as you represent our district too, we, you know, we believe in that. So you can always hear that within the, within the resolution that WASB is always going to go back to that to support local control, even though this might become before the legislators that they will always say local control if you're creating something there.
I saw a lot of they could this, or that, or that, or that. So I didn't see it just as extracurricular, but they would link your transportation aid to the amount of poverty that you have in your community. And then these are some possible ways that those dollars could be allocated, is the way that I read it.
And that would benefit us.
Correct, yeah.
So.
To provide transportation to students living within a two mile radius because.
Would be a choice. They're not saying you have to. One way to increase school attendance reduces is for schools to provide transportation to students who would be otherwise are required by law to be transported, providing additional transportation services. It says, because people transportation is costly, additional state aid could assist districts in such efforts. So not that those are the only choices, but that there would be some additional funding for possibilities. And to be honest, if it's transportation aid, that is, it could be bus replacement. You could also be used to, because we used to add two buses each year. And during our budget reductions, we moved down to just one new bus a year. So additional funding for districts based off of their poverty would typically benefit us. And they're not telling us we would do this, they're saying it would be such as these kinds of things.
And we have had such a high transportation cost anyway.
Correct.
So anything would really help us.
So.
Do you?
So that's why I was.
Do you?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And, and we have always decided on a representative after hearing the debate can, can make a decision. But she wants a good idea about how we feel. So we don't need to vote on everything, but just know that our district would benefit from that. And I think at the debate, you will hear that some of the larger districts, smaller districts, I mean, some are going to be benefit for some and some not. And you'll have that conversation, so, okay, thank you.
The next one was oh eight. So again, this was an issue of local control, if you will. And my concern is that if the state is creating categorical aid to support the promotion of social learning, how are they going to measure that and how would they be using it? And what programs are they going to approve or not approve? I'm always concerned when within your state institutions is to make these decisions, it becomes out of the tenfold of our community.
So I will tell you that this year, the district is probably spending, hmm, I was going to say $20,000 to $30,000 on SEL curriculum across the board. We selected them based off of the research that we could find, based off of what was most appropriate for that age group of kids, how the committees that Stephanie has worked with, they really found three different skills that they want to focus on. It's the mindset, self-regulation, and executive functioning. And so those were the three greatest needs in social emotional learning that our teachers identified. And so look for curriculums that all support that. I recognize what you're saying, that once they give you the money, they're going to say, but you can only buy this with it. I'm saying we're spending our other money on it. We disagree because I feel like any new resources are helpful because we're going to buy it. And, and to your first point, wouldn't it be great if we didn't have to teach social emotional learning? Yes, it would be great, but that's not our current reality. And so if we sit back and wait for parents, communities, and churches to do it, we are going to continue to serve kids who don't have that direct instruction, so.
What I wrote down is we're doing this now, it'd be great to have, not to have to look for grants to fund some of this stuff.
Yeah, there you go.
That's what I, that's how I felt with that one.
Cindy, want to have any comments or direction for Patty on that or thoughts? So again, we are already spending out of our own funds. And this is a big subject at the state level in the Capitol Building, so, okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You did a lot of work there.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
And so I'm not trying to influence anyone, I'm just trying to tell you the school perspective.
No, and that's, and that's what we, that's what we need. Yes, thank you. The next one is oh nine.
This one I was really concerned about because I didn't believe it makes the school a positive and I don't hope that it does. And I don't believe that that's the purview of schools. I would much rather see a resolution supporting the state funding of our behavioral institutional resources that are already there that are underfunded. I really, I think this is, again, kind of a dangerous thing. I don't, I think we have an achievement problem. I understand that everything is integrated and that mental health has a lot to do with learning. But I don't think schools should be saddled with the responsibility of mental health treatment. And which includes, as I mentioned here, diagnoses. If you're going to treat, you've got to diagnose. And who's going to do the diagnosis?
There's already a resolution on the books that has been approved. And this is to recreate some of the wording in that. So, and to expand on that, and you'll hear more debate on that too, so.
I mean, it's pretty specific that this money is going to be used for the below issue things. And again, I don't think that the school should be responsible for the mental health. I think it should be responsible for referrals. And I think this is a healthcare issue that should be funded through healthcare that is already in flex.
In an ideal world, I would do backflips and agree 100% if that system did exist. But I live in a world of control the controllables. And I can't go to the hospital and say, I need you to contract with more mental health service providers because our kids need it. But if there's funding coming to the district that we could contract with a mental health provider, great. I don't think there's anybody who wants to get into diagnoses. We know that we can't treat. I can't tell you the number of time way back when I was a principal, parents would say, but can't my kid just meet with a counselor? Your child needs a therapist, not a school counselor. There's a significant difference. And we know our limitations. But when there's a void of anything else, you're faced to do something or the kid is melting down and, and there's no instruction happening. So I recognize the need for medical professionals. When I read that list of bullets. When I read that list of bullets, all of them are reaching out to employ other people to do this work, not that we become those people contracting with a mental health service provider, which.
About school-based mental health-related services.
And so, when I read that, I'm telling you, this is how it's interpreted. That means the DEP conversation we had today, that student already has a relationship with Stein Counseling. The kid doesn't wanna go, and so, the parents try to send him, and he skips and goes wherever. School-based mental health, the parent still pays for it, does all that work. They've already selected Stein. Stein comes to school where the kid is and pulls the kid into another therapy room, does the therapy. The parent doesn't have to take off work to take their child into that session. And the kid doesn't get out of school to go anywhere, because they're already here and doing it. School-based means the therapists come in, not that school is doing that counseling. There is nobody in our system that feels like they are qualified to do that work. So, I just wanna be very clear, school-based simply means, like you've heard of, like the Laxas model, that they call it a neighborhood school, because they have a medical clinic right in their school. That's a school-based medical clinic. The principal is not doing triage when somebody comes in with a medical need. It is simply connecting the resources for the families. So that is what school-based mental health.
Who provides the space and the resources?
By resources, which.
Contract, I mean, you're choosing who you're going to have as.
Whoever's willing. We don't pay them anything. We, we don't pay them.
But what is the contracting, I mean, what is the money?
Giving them space, yeah.
If we receive funding, we could possibly contract with them. There are some districts who say, one of the models that we were talking about, they will pay for, once a kid reaches, so there's all these matrices about trauma. So a student reaches a certain mark, and the school will pay for three sessions. And anything past three, the family has to decide if they're going to do that. Currently, we provide a room, and, and they come in and do it. And we don't handpick anybody who's willing to sign MOU with us. We're willing to allow them to have access to the kids. Because the greatest barrier is finding enough providers to do it.
There aren't enough.
That's what I'm saying. And so, if this is gonna allow us to reduce barriers to kids getting that access, then we're all for it.
We already do stuff, we do, but we've had trauma-sensitive training.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we've done a lot, some of this. And we talk about wanting, wouldn't it be great to have a mental health coordinator at school?
Well, and remember, we did receive that Mental Health Navigator grant, and so we do have a new here grant.
So we have our YBS, our risk, the, 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 can I have access to that?
For sure, if you'd like to see it. Uh, you'd, well, so they share it with everybody countywide, not specific to school. So if we wanted to break that down just here, we certainly could. If, would you like that as a future agenda item?
Um, I would, I guess. I'd like it before, if I could get it, if somebody could email that to me, to inform. I don't know if you can. I couldn't get access to it. You can't get access to it.
No, because it's a lot of.
You know, I talked with the director, the person who compiled the information.
From the county?
From the state.
Oh, sorry.
Because I couldn't, that was that Kate McCoy that put in there. Because I couldn't figure out the numbers. They were talking about eighty-eight percent participated at Center Center. Well, there's two thousand students that they looked at to me, which was a handpicked group of students to average the results for the state. And so, that's what the data was presented to, to, to speak.
So it used to be handled by the UW Extension Office for many years in our community. And then it was just recently taken over by the county. And so, we've always participated. And within the last five years, I'd say, Melrose Mendoro has rejoined an Alma Center. So they publish and use heavily for grant-writing countywide data. And the two smaller districts would only sign on to agree if they promised that the data would always be grouped together as a county, because they felt their systems were so small that would be self-identifying some of those behaviors, and they were concerned about that. So we absolutely have Jackson County data, that is, all of our students that were participating. I don't have that report. Kristi Hansen just recently sent an email out to the principals asking to set an appointment with her so that we could go through that data together. So by tomorrow morning, absolutely not. But, but in the, for next month, absolutely could, so.
The 2017 data should.
Yep, it should, but Kristi wouldn't have that, because she didn't do it. I'm trying to think, that was, that was a Monica thing. I'm just trying to. I will do some digging, see if I can find 2017 data. But I know that you can have access to this year, I just, I don't have it.
When you go to the website, it says you lost contact or just took your illustration or to access it.
Yep, because small districts get nervous about how the data's gonna be used. Used as a weapon or a tool?
I have the data.
You have? Okay, thank you.
So the district has lost the coordinator, constantly, so, just waiting for your best.
Okay.
Will you send it to me, please?
I really still felt that this was still another one that's great for us, because it would give us plenty to do what we wanted to do.
This was on your last year before, and it was great discussion, or a lot of school districts just, and I have the same concern you have. And it was overwhelming. The majority of the individuals said they don't want the schools providing the healthcare. They want the contract or the resources available. They wanted a little basically, where can we go and pull that out? Maybe, like, River and Jackson County, we're limited. I mean, we'd be great if they could pull Claire Laxas and grab some of their resources, and that might help us do that.
Get them.
So how are they gonna determine that that's what the money is used for?
This is a long, long ways away from seeing money, but.
Well, in all of our county practices, there are, if it says per pupil, in the first year, it's a. Designated to help them accomplish the purposes listed below. And so, there are different aids that we get. You can use Title IV, and here's the things you can use it for. Title this, and these are the things you can use it for. Yeah, so we currently get some of those entitlements that, these are the dollars, here's the topics that you could use it for. And so then, it's on our honor, how we do our accounting and making sure that that happens.
Our honors.
All right, then too. Our honor and the auditor is spent.
Okay, any more discussion on O nine?
So the next one is ten. This one, we've already had a lot of discussion on, but.
And I don't think we need to do more. I just, I would like to see amendments to this resolution to, rather than require, because I don't know how everyone feels to require. You know, how can you require that? So I would, I think it would be wise to say something like, we encourage collaborative discussion in communities that use these. And aspects are different than titles, as I mentioned. So I think this could be amended to do a good job, rather than sounding punitive and creating divisions among communities, which certainly will do a difference if required.
And if you go to the mic and say that, they're gonna ask you to submit your amendment that you believe in.
Do you have time to read it in official way?
Does anyone have any? We did vote on this before that we were in support even of it, okay.
Makes me aware when I was watching the games yesterday, and you saw Kansas City.
I know, I know. But then, did you see who their mascot is? It was like that goofy-looking, I even made a comment. My family was watching the game. Two thousand eleven, meal shaming.
That was one that I can't forget, I thought could be handed again back to the communities, because I think our community came up with a really nice way of action.
But did you read the paragraph, the sentence that says, "The WASB also opposes state legislation mandating that schools provide a fully reimbursable meal to any student who requests one." So WASB is against the state telling us, we must feed everyone a full reimbursable meal. So I appreciate that, because we don't want everybody to be able to have that free reimbursable meal if they have that negative balance. So if the opposite of this were true, our new system would not be able to be implemented. So this is actually, I thought, one you'd be in favor of. Because it's eliminating some state control and saying, you can't tell us, we have to feed all of our kids, is the way I read that one.
I kind of felt, just reading that, that that term meal shaming depends entirely on how you define it. And I thought that was the tricky part.
I don't like that term even.
No.
I don't, I think that was my objection to it. It makes it sound like it is not intended the way it is written. So I didn't necessarily, you know, I, I think we should be able to do something about people not being, who are able to pay. And encouraging people who can't access the resources. And so, this to me, when I read through it, said, we're not gonna be able to allow them to do that. So if you read differently, because the bottom says unfunded mandates, that doesn't mean the same thing to me.
Oh, so it says, this resolution also restates WASB's opposition to unfunded mandates. So they're basically saying, we as an organization do not want you to tell us we have to do this, because you're not giving us any money to do it, so.
So you felt that it encouraged other alternatives?
Correct, then forcing us to feed every student a full reimbursable meal.
Okay, anyone else have any strong feelings about that one?
So this one, I, when I read through it, it hit to me, when I read through it, said, we are, we are not going to require, we are going to require a lesser standard of training for people involved in schools, particularly because of geographical issues in the north. And I was concerned about that, because I think the solution would be to provide the training in the north, not just to say, okay, we don't need those standards. That was the struggle that I had, unless someone else read it differently.
So there are students who graduate with a four-year degree in being a school, or being a social worker. It's an additional certification to be a school social worker. And so, they're simply saying that, are the differences really that stark? That could the, could we start with somebody who's licensed as a social worker, as opposed to simply not being able to find somebody? And then, would they need that other graduate degree of school social workers as something they work towards? Or, or, I don't have a strong opinion, I just know that it's really difficult to find social workers.
Social worker counselors, we should understand, that's seven thousand hours of training. And it's that way because of the unique needs of students.
They would still be licensed as social workers, but not necessarily a school social worker. Right, right. Again, I, I don't have a strong feeling, other than it just really makes it difficult for districts to secure somebody.
So why are the, why don't we create the training programs, or they're already there, for that requirement?
Something on to our colleges.
Well, why don't, why is there such a shortage of speech and language classes?
Yeah, because they only accept ten in the program, and there's two hundred openings, yeah. Yeah, it's, I think our higher education needs to hear from our state too. This is what's happening, so, this is part of it.
People need to be willing to go into a profession that you need your master's degree for, to take a, it's not fantastically paying job. That's a lot of school debt that a lot of people are taking on. And so, it's just not as attractive of a position. So, again, no strong feelings, just sharing rationale. Sixteen is next, Jill.
I can't even remember, right? How, I just said, how will, until we know more money, will increase student achievement?
So there are several, no, there are several studies that talk about the effect size of different factors when it comes to student achievement and strong relationships with kids. It doesn't take a, you know, huge jump to say, if I have twenty kids in front of me, as opposed to thirty kids in front of me, you know, that, that I would be able to build better relationships. So we talk about the power of providing feedback for kids. Well, if I can turn around these papers that you wrote in one day, as opposed to a week, you're gonna get more timely feedback. And so, it becomes a capacity thing, more people. And to be honest, we know that people are eighty percent of our budget. Let's, let's be honest, when we have to make reductions, that's where the rubber always hits the road. I don't know if you guys realize how many fewer aides we have now than we did fifteen years ago. I mean, every kindergarten class had a full-time teacher and a full-time aide. We haven't had that in, I don't know how long. So as kids come to us with more and more challenges, as the curriculum continues to increase in rigor, we have fewer people there to help that work. So I think that more people certainly helps.
So we're just saying more people, just more money?
More money. What, what do we spend most of our money on? I'm sorry, that was the connection that I made.
So the FTE is the employer, right? Add in there, I mean, point two.
So, I'm sorry, no, let me, let me just clarify that. So the Blue Ribbon Commission says, so right now, everybody gets their state aid based off of their, you know, per pupil, however much they're giving for that per pupil. So we add up, you know, seventeen hundred and fifty students. And so, that's our FTE, full-time equivalency enrollment. They're saying that, the Blue Ribbon Commission suggested that for every student that lives in poverty, they count as one point two kids. So our FTE would get larger, knowing that all of our state aid is contingent on our butts-in-seats, that we always call it. If I'm a kid who lives in poverty, I'm one point two kids. You don't live in poverty, you're one kid. Our number of FTE students that we claim is larger, therefore, our general reimbursement is larger. This is not tied to a specific, you must do this, this, and this. Our general overall aid is higher, then we get to decide how we're gonna spend those funds. Thus, being able to reduce class sizes and to spend it on people.
So just because it says FTE doesn't mean employee?
Full-time equivalent student, that's how we measure it. Yep, so like our, our 4K kids, they're a point five FTE, full-time equivalent. I, absolutely, in the employment world, we talk about full-time employment, but it's full-time equivalent student.
That would be great for us.
Yes, it would.
That would be phenomenal for us, that one.
It's just sad to me that everything is related to how poorly we're doing. You know, so in order to qualify for all of these things, you have to prove that you have a lot of poverty, that you have a lot of dysfunction, that you have a lot, you know, and that's where we.
I don't feel like we need to prove that. I feel like it comes screaming at us in a lot of different ways, so.
I mean, do you know what I mean?
I do, I do.
We're not, we're not promoting excellence or achievement, or, we're not fun, I mean, it'll.
No, I think we are.
We're trying to get there, but you know what?
But Patty, the research is so clear that there are many, many, many factors that go into student success. However, there are years and years and decades that support kids that live in poverty have additional barriers to education to overcome. And so, when you think about communities that don't live in poverty, they are already supporting their schools at a much higher financial level. So now, they don't have those barriers that come with living in poverty, and they're already spending more per pupil than we are. So we are low-spending, and we have students who have all these holes that we need to try to fill.
I'm, I'm just saying, to me, it kind of sounds, you know.
Yeah. And so, I think when we talk.
Try to sound discompassionate.
No, no, but when we talk about how can we level the playing field? How can all communities prepare their students to be able to compete and compare apples to apples? What's going to fill that gap? If not, resources to be able to do something different than, than just hanging out. I'm not saying, you know, there's a magic class-size number. I'm not saying that, you know, five more aides is gonna make a difference. But is it gonna help? Is it gonna get us closer?
And as a new delegate, when you go on, if you're gonna arrive tomorrow, on Tuesday night at seven, there's a chance for you can have clarification of any of this. There won't be any debate that night. But then on Wednesday too, there's also a training about just the process and the orientation of being a delegate. So I would encourage you to do that if you are still having some, okay, great, okay.
And seventeen.
What, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we were done.
No, I'm sorry, no, it's okay.
Okay, sorry.
There's a lot.
Did anybody else have any concerns? I feel like I'm the only one that questioned.
No, I did, I, I care about the statement.
This one seems super vague to me, like.
Yeah.
You're gonna wonder how you're gonna be cohesive to make it happen.
To me, it's a feel-good statement, like.
And I really don't think, I mean, if there are people with different ideas or different cultural values or different things, who are the schools to say, you have to embrace this in order for us to want you to be part of us? And that, that, I didn't care for that.
I think we're at agreement. Look at that, we end on a, we all agreed.
Does anyone else?
It just took us a while to get there.
Does anyone else have any discussion on any of the resolutions?
Patty, thank you for sending this to me.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you, you did a lot of work on that, Patty, thank you. Conference workshop attendance, some of us will be leaving tomorrow, so, anything else going on? Okay. Future agenda items.
Would you like a YRBS in addition to getting the data, do you wanna talk about it here?
Depends on if anyone else is interested in that.
Does everyone know what the youth risk behaviors rate is?
Yes, yes. You all did it when you were younger.
Are you saying, yes, you're interested in, or yes, you're younger?
Yes, of course we are, yeah. I, I think it is a good idea to look at it.
The second one was, Annie mentioned that this committee was wondering about resources for parenting, and there's that strength in families program, I think we should look at that. And I've talked, I don't know if that was appropriate, actually, but I talked to Lynn Meyer, and she said she's very happy to give us more.
Awesome. Awesome, so, perfect. Did you schedule her, or should I?
I didn't schedule her, just, if you'd be willing, if I brought it up.
Perfect.
Okay, okay. I move that the board adjourn to close session, according to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, per N one per N C, for the purpose of discussing administrative contract renewals. We'll do roll call for those present. Mary Jo Rosmanowski, yes. Mary Jo Radcliffe. Amy Hoffman. Patty Jacobson. Scott Burton.
Yes.
We are going to close session, and thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll take a break, a break and get our.
Can I just answer your question from earlier? So, is that. So it's just a definition, you know, it was a current party that used to purchase flowers from Matthew Diner.